Good evening, welcome to the Longpoke City Council meeting. A report from action taken in closed session.
Thank you Mayor. There was one item on the closed session agenda that was discussed, but there was no action taken, so there's nothing to report.
Okay. And our closed session item this evening dealt with our negotiations with the Longpoke Police Officers Association. And now for our invocation, Paul Davidson. If you'd all please rise. Won't you please pray with me? We pray with gratitude for this community and for all who make it a pleasant place to live and grow. For the city employees at all levels, the teachers and support staff of our schools, the volunteers who freely offer their time and services. We are thankful for the children who are our future and all others who are our present. We are thankful for all who came before us and the rich history they left us in Longpoke's past. We are thankful for Longpoke's natural beauty and for all else that makes it a special place to live. We pray that this council meeting be blessed with peace and understanding. Bless all who are here tonight who endeavor to make our city of Longpoke a better community for all who call it home. Bless each here with clear and open minds and hearts. Bless this city council and the decisions they make. Bless this time. Bless this community. Bless this nation and bless this planet. Bless the leaders of the world near and afar with wisdom and compassion for those they serve. Help all to know peace and harmony and help each of us to always remember to put the needs of others above our own personal wants. Amen. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's kind of an interesting circle of life because Paul's dad Hal is the one that got me into being involved in the chamber and the city and all those things, so remember it's your dad. Okay, presentations presented elsewhere. On July 23rd, 2014, I presented a proclamation to Jules Hain, the Longpoke Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, 2014 Man of the Year and Manager of the Vons on North H Street, and to Maria Shilter of the Longpoke Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, Woman of the Year, who is the coordinator of so many things at the mission in her ninety-something year, so we're thankful for both of them. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you Mayor, just a couple of quick things to report on.
Excuse me, one thing. There are seats in the front row and we don't bite, so come on down. Guys stand in the back, come on down, take a seat, make it easy. My plan one day is to tape a $20 bill under one of those chairs and see if anybody sits in it, but I haven't got to it today. Sorry Chief.
No problem at all. One thing is just to give a heads up that we do have a fire crew that's working up in Northern California in Shasta County on the Bald Fire. There are probably a dozen different fire events going on around the state and we're involved in a mutual aid action. Just wanted to point that out, it wasn't too long ago that we had our Megalito Canyon Fire here and we, for people that saw the help that came in, it came from some pretty far reaches throughout the state and just wanted to let folks know that we do the same going out to help others. And a related topic, I believe the fire chief has some information to share as well. Good news.
Yeah, I was trying to make the connection.
Well, you are the connection, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll make this brief. It gives me great pleasure to share with you a letter of donation from our firefighters' foundation. As I stand here this evening, ten members of our foundation are at the fire station going through training on the brand-new fire safety and disaster preparedness training trailer that this letter affects a donation to the fire department of. The foundation spent the last year working to raise funds to fund this $102,000 state-of-the-art trailer. So it gives me great pleasure to share this letter with you. Our fleet services are actually already in the process of registering it because I didn't think you would tell me to say no. And we look forward to previewing it for council at one of our events in the very near future. And should you have any questions, I can make short order of it if you wish. Chief, for the audience and the council, could you briefly describe the features of the trailer? And if anybody else forgot to turn their cellphone off, go ahead and do it. This trailer is different than the one that you typically see at our open house. This one has state-of-the-art, high-technology training props that actually very realistically simulate multiple fire situations such as a stove top fire. Kitchen fires, by the way, are the number-one type of fires we have in our community. A stove top fire, toaster fire, fire in the kitchen, fire in a trash can, and utilizing laser-guided fire extinguishers that have sound effects that make it just as if you're using a fire extinguisher. When the stove top catches on fire, there are heaters in the kitchen that come on and you hear a roaring noise and the room fills with smoke, so it's extremely realistic. Then we move to a severe weather prop, which is utilizing a video and surround sound will put them through warnings of an earthquake and other severe weather. Then we move into the bedroom where, once we close the door, it simulates the door heating up, the door handle heating up, and smoke coming in underneath the door, so we can share with the adults and children how important it is to put towels down and make their exit through the back window. All the time, they have the opportunity to simulate a call to 911. There's actually a recording that prompts them through some of the things they need to do, and the smoke detectors are going off. So it's pretty cool. I have, my training's tomorrow. I'll tell you what, I opened up one of the cabinets and this looks like one of our IT server rooms, so I may have some challenges. Councilmember Costa will be happy to help you with that. I'm sure. And part of it does work off an iPad, so I will be looking forward to the coaching.
Chief, on behalf of the city council and the city community, please extend our thank you to the foundation.
Thank you.
And just so the council knows, we will be presenting a proclamation to the foundation on behalf of all of their efforts going forward, and I've got the drafts on my desk if anybody wants to look at it. Chief?
I have nothing else this time, thank you Mayor.
Okay. All right, now we're gonna have oral communications, so let me kinda, since there's a lot of you here, let me get this organized. First, most of you are here to talk about the swap meet. Is there anyone here for oral communications that's not here to talk about the swap meet? Anybody? Because I'm gonna bring you up first. Anybody here that's not here to talk about the swap meet? Okay, so we're at the end of that. Now I'd like to invite Mike Ross up first to talk about the swap meet. Mike? Oh, and a lot of you haven't been here before. We don't cheer and we don't boo. We can smile, okay?
Mayor, City of Council?
No, this is five.
I am proud to be back here.
This is for five minutes.
And what I'd like to do is give a list of signatures that we have from the community that would like to keep the swap meet open, and it's a wonderful thing for the families, and this is what we've been doing for years. And we're trying to keep it and keep the people coming on Saturday so they have a place to go in Longpoke. And I'd like to present one article that y'all hopefully have read. One of the best tourist places for people to go is the Longpoke Swap Meet on Saturday. And they said they would like to come out and do another one with us, and I'm hoping that happens. And now what I'd like to do is present signatures.
You can give those to the city clerk, Mike.
Right. I hope I did it right.
Yeah, you did, you did fine.
And so what we're doing, we're proposing that the swap meets stay open. We have vendors here, we have customers here, we have friends, we have foes, just like anybody else does. We're good, we're bad, but we do abide by the law. And so any questions that I can answer, please ask me, because it's very important to this community to have a place for the people to go. And we appreciate being able to have a swap meet. So I'm open to any, any questions.
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck?
Have you looked for another location?
Yes, we have. We tried Mission Hills, we found out that it was zoned incorrectly, and the county, after we worked on it for three months, come up and said, "So they're trying to find another way to get around." So far, we've found nothing. And see, the problem is that most of the people, excuse me, about half the people walk over from the project because they don't have cars or, it used to be really, really bad. But like I said, now, we've lost a lot of people, but we still have a very good turnout. And it's really the ideal spot for the low-income families to have a place to go. I mean, it's mom and the children and the fathers, if their fathers brought them, they're bringing their children back, and it's just a wonderful thing. I hate to see it be dismissed so easy, because we really, really, really need to have this and we need a place for these, for these children to go. And they have a wonderful time. They come down, they get a churro, they get a snow cone, they can get a tamale, they can buy a pair of tennis shoes, or they can buy an old shovel. It's whatever, ever they want.
Who's next? Mike, what I might suggest to you are two locations, and I mentioned them last time, but we were having a different discussion then. Number one would be speaking to the Longpoke Unified School List with regard to the high school parking lot, which is adequate in size, and you might not be able to use it every Saturday, but probably the majority of the Saturdays it's unused. And the other one is, there's a, and it is dirt, so it would require importing some cover as a one-time expense, but there is a large parcel that belongs to the city, it's part of the airport.
We would love that spot.
Well, you would need to come and talk to the administrator and make a proposal. And obviously, the advantage to that location is there are no residences around it, it's outside the fence on the north side of the, or south side of the airport. So you'd have to come and talk with the city administrator about.
Certainly will.
About that.
That's a, that is a beautiful spot.
And I took a quick look, and you recall that I was in favor of giving you some more time to find another location?
Yes.
So those two come to mind, but, you know, maybe take a drive around town and see what else is out there. It does need to be a commercial parcel.
Yeah.
So a vacant, a vacant parcel in a residential area obviously isn't gonna work.
Absolutely, because, excuse me, I learned a lot about the zoning laws in Santa Barbara County, and departments are not allowed, you know, like a shopping center, it's no swap meet, no outdoor markets, period.
Well, and here it would require a conditional use permit, which is a process that you would need to go through with the city.
Right, absolutely.
I would, those are the two that came to mind. I was looking at the aerial in the office, aerial photograph in the office before coming out to the meeting, and those are two you might take a look at.
That would be wonderful, seriously.
Okay. Any other questions? You've still got two minutes and 39 seconds left.
I'll tell ya, I'm just, I'm just proud to be here and I'm proud of the people that showed up tonight, and we will do everything in our world to keep this thing going, and we do require everybody to have proper permits. Everybody. I've gotta pay over thirty, actually over $3,000 just to get started. I'm paying that. Not one person's gonna sell there that's gonna close me down. I have put out a lot of money, so I make sure that everybody is licensed, permit, state tax, everything that they need, and so we try, we really, really try. And it's really difficult when everybody's on you all the time. So I'm, I appreciate that you've taken the time to listen to what I have to say.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, now there are a lot of you out there, so I have a system for working through this. So all of you that would like to take one minute and come up and tell us that you support Mike, come on down. You have one minute at a time, come on over. Support or oppose Mike, come right over to the microphone. I'm sorry? Either way, but you got one minute. Those that have long speeches will get to you later. Yeah. This is for the short speeches. Sir, and you need to state your name, if you would please.
Russell Gibson.
Mr. Gibson, yes sir.
Okay, I just wanted to say that from what I understand, you know, I'm not that familiar with the whole thing, but it generates revenue for the city, it adds local color, people seem to enjoy it. People come to the city as guests, we take them to the swap meet, and it's a very enjoyable time, and there's no crime associated with it that I know of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ah, remember? No applause. You can smile hard. No booing either, we treat everybody fair. Ma'am?
Mayor, council members, my name is Dorian Hodge. I live at 220 South I Street and Kitty Corner from where the swap meet is held each Saturday. I have been living in Longpoke full-time since retiring from the Air Force, so I've been here since 2005. I have never found that swap meet to be anything but something that gives our city its unique flavor. It's a wonderful event. It brings vibrancy to our old-town area, and it should not be done away with. I'm not sure how many of you have read Chuck Arnold's opinion piece in the Longpoke Record where he talked about it was a little bit of a draconian step to just say we're not gonna have it when there could be solutions found if people have complained. I want to implore you to keep the swap meet going.
Thank you, Dorian. And who's next?
Hi, I'm Shelley Davis. I live at 417 South G. I used to live at 133 South G directly across from the swap meet. And there's a huge amount of issues, noise, trash, traffic, which everybody knows. They haven't changed, they've had years and years and years to correct all of these things. A few things have been corrected here and there, but then they go back and they're doing exactly the same thing over again. A vote has been cast, it's been decided. The location of the swap meet has been discontinued. The swap meet does not have to end. If the patrons and the person in charge of the swap meet wanna relocate, go for it. You guys have every right to do so. It is nobody's responsibility except the patrons and the owner of the swap meet to find a new place. It's nobody's duty except the owners. I really, really hope you guys keep your decision that you guys have already made. It just, it's way too big for the location, and everybody knows that. Thank you.
Thank you. And who's next, please?
My name is Daniel Calleja. They know me by Danielson. I got my company in solving, living for three years. I used to come to the swap meet every single Saturday with my kids on the old times, that was fun. It's like taking them to Disneyland. Over here it's inexpensive, doesn't change, you know? Anyway, to members over here, I please help us to keep the swap meet open. It's good for the families, good for the kids, we don't make any mess, it's no drugs, no alcoholics, no nothing like that. And then, I play music over there, you have to see people sometimes dancing, sometimes singing. I just want to make everybody happy. I like Longpoke, that's why I decided to move to Longpoke by myself. I appreciate you guys for your time, thank you everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Eustoyo Vallejo. I'm selling tamales maybe for about ten years, and I would like to keep the swap meet open. I pay my permits for everything that is required, and that's all I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Sir? Sir? Mr. Hayo? You have a county health permit to sell tamales, correct? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Mark Bryant. I live at 222 South I Street, which is approximately four houses from the swap meet. I've been there for a year now, and I can tell you from experience living right next door that the noise issues, most of the mornings are due to the clean air buses, and the crowds of people standing there waiting on clean air, as well as the trash on the property. I walk past there every day, I live four houses away, just to make you aware of that. The other thing is, I'm also a vendor at the swap meet, so are several of my roommates. I think it's a wonderful thing for the public. I mean, we don't have a lot left, our bowling alley's gone, our movie theater's gone, there's not a lot left for people to do in this town anymore. And I really, really would wish you folks would reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council, my name is Armando Jimenez. I've lived in Longpoke about, almost three years. Longpoke provides a place for people, for single mothers out there to make an honest buck. Might not be a big thing to you guys, sitting up here with your vacations and everything, but it is for the smaller people of this community. This community, there's nothing to do in this community. I took a little consensus and people, I asked them, "What's there to do here in Longpoke? What's the best thing to do here in Longpoke?" Flower Festival, they're right. And the second one was the swap meet. Provides a place for people to find, do a lot of treasure hunting, buy stuff. You know, I hear a lot of complaints about, I thought this was in United States of America, I seen in the paper, oh, they're not from, they're not from Longpoke, why are they doing business here? That's not very democratic. I also hear a lot of complaints about, we don't have no parking.
You need to wrap up.
That could be in it, your end-up way of handling your business, you know? It's my understanding, if your food is good, people will walk a block to go get your food. I come from LA and I know that for a fact.
Okay.
Parking is a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of the council and Mr. John Lin. I was here at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, you need to say your name.
Pedro Hernandez.
Thank you, Pedro.
I was here at the last meeting when, when you terminated the swap meet, and I remember telling you that, you know, there is a big community that it will be hurt if you close it, and I'm just here to tell you again that, as you hear this gentleman speaking, I have asked us the same question to people, what is to do here in Longpoke? And most of them said, "There's nothing to do, it's just the swap meet. We look forward on Saturdays to go to the swap meet." And I just wanna ask again, you know, don't take away the only thing there is for the community, where families go and enjoy. And Mr. John Lin, I remember when you were running for, for a mayor, you were at the Cinco de Mayo, I was there, you were at September 16th, I was there too, you were at the swap meet, and I was there asking for our support, and I'm gonna ask you for your support tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi. My name is Salvador Aranda. I'm selling the swap meet. I come from Los Angeles every week. I like the swap meet, I love this swap meet. Can you please unclose the swap meet so I can explain? I don't speak English too much, but a lot of people, we don't speak English, but we love this swap meet.
Your English is just fine, your message is clear. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, I'm Maria Nigas. I've been in the swap meet with, helping my dad his business grow over ten years. I'd be really sad to see it go away. It's the only thing we have, pretty much, in Longpoke. It's been nice seeing it grow and other businesses grow and seeing other people come. It'd be really sad to see unemployment. Thank you.
Thank you, you did very well.
Hello, my name is Dora Gastelum. I'm a vendor on the swap meet. I'm here because all people love the swap meet in Longpoke. It's very traditional for many years. We're selling much stuff. People can go buy like LA or another cities or more expensive stuff in other cities on the stores. So I'm selling for over sixteen years there. I have my kids almost twenty and, almost twenty-one and eighteen, and always I take with me my child. They, we are people working hard, you know, everybody start, we don't start yet really early, so we start, now we start seven. It's, it's not really early for that, you know, making noise. We try to clean everything always when we're down for the swap meet. So I'm here for every people. We already lost customers because the people scared, they said on the news, "Oh, there's no more swap meet, oh, swap meet." You know, I just say, "Thank you, I really appreciate your help."
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Francisco Ramirez, and I'm in favor to keep the swap meet open. And I think people is complaining about trash and stuff, and I think in other places in the town has more trash than the swap meet. Everybody, all the sellers, people is working really hard to collect trash and stuff, and like, Dora, since my wife has said, everybody is really working hard to not making noise. We are set to start at seven, everybody really quiet and stuff. I think people, it's a few people that really complain just thinking on themselves, not thinking of people living from the swap meet, making business, they have another job, maybe they're complaining, but for us, it's the swap meet where we make money, and it's not just a business, people enjoy, and it's not the same people go every Saturday, it's different people. You can go and come people every Saturday. How many people go to the swap meet? It's not the same people, it's different people. Even from another town, they come to, to the swap meet, from San Ines, Santa Maria, so I'm, I want to stay with the swap meet open. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco.
Hi, my name is Enrique Mesa, and I used to bring my family to the swap meet every Saturday, and this year I became a vendor, and if that, if some complaints about trash, I think that can be taken care of. Some noise, I think that one, that can be taken care of too. Besides that, we don't require any assistance from, from the city employees, like on Fridays, farmers market, and I will like to, for you guys to keep the swap meet open. Thank you.
Thank you. Enrique?
Good evening. My name is Gilberto Tovar. We own the market at 201 South I, and pretty much, I just think we have, last year alone, we paid over a lot of money to the city and utilities, and part of that is that we have a good And part of that is that we have a good sales during the swap meet. There is parking, there is trash. It all gets cleaned. It's half the day, not the whole day, not the whole week. And I think it should just stay open. It helps everybody. The little issues could be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto.
Good evening. I have to agree that I do not support the swap meet to continue to be there at that area. It needs to move to a different area because it's outgrown the area. And I live at five, on the 500 block of South J Street. So.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Marge Hampton.
Thanks, Marge. Okay. Just a second to catch up on my notes. A comment? Not yet. Okay, now, I got all of you that had something short to say. Now I'll go to three minutes. Is there somebody out there that has a three-minute speech? There we go. And thanks to everybody for being very respectful and cooperative to everyone that's testifying. Thank you very much. Sir?
My name is Richard Told. I live at 1300 West April Cod Avenue. This is my third time I've been to a city council meeting. Throw it out.
Thank you.
I know that the swap meet has not always been a good neighbor. There has been problems. I think it's understaffed. Trying to run, too big of an operation with too few people. You pick up trash, et cetera. I found out different regulations by accident. Don't park in the parking lot over by sissy's. Park in the public one. Don't leave your car here just in passing. I think the vendors should be more informed of what's happening. I, I think the swap meet needs to kind of go back to its roots, maybe be a little smaller, humbler. More of, I guess, a flea market type thing with, people selling more, more of the use, the nick deck things. People who come to buy the vegetables, they don't buy anything from me. People that go, what I call the Park Avenue area over in the asphalt. I'm out with the gophers in the dirt, you know? And they, I don't ever see much from them coming by. It's, it's actually been hurting here lately. That's a month, month and a half, two months. Less vendors, less customers. I don't know, I really think maybe I'd like to keep the swap meet, but maybe we need to look real closely at management, where the ordinances are followed. I know that, I called the state franchise tax board and about the sales tax. I didn't know if I should be charging sales tax on the useings I have, to get it clarified. And they said if, they'd be more happy to send some people down and watch to see if sales tax is being collected. They would go do, you know, an audit on anybody. And I have been audited by them once in my life. And I think it was worse than the IRS audit I went through. I think maybe a better look, not stuff, but let's plan it out before we go. Putting it right back in and having the same problems. It, it is out of hand there. I'm a vendor and I've seen stuff happen that, as they say, that shouldn't be. It needs to be looked at again and redone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mary Lynn. My name is Tarkomar Fallfall. I was born and raised in Lompoc, California. And I am against the swap meet at its current location. I feel I have the right to exist and should exist because it's a good thing for the community. But people fail to mention the other good things to do in Lompoc, California. We have some of the most beautiful hiking trails. We have the Mission. There's some great gyms in town, great CrossFit gyms in town. Plenty of the aquatic center. There's plenty of sports for children to do. I was born and raised, I've never had a problem finding anything to do. I've never gotten in any trouble in my entire life. Most people here who are for the swap meet are doing it solely on a monetary value, a monetary value. They're doing it because they sell there. And I understand that. They want to make their livelihood. But the fact of the matter is, when I have to go to work at 6:00 at night and I get home at 7:00 in the morning after a 12-hour shift and I can't sleep because of the swap meet noise, it's pretty frustrating. My father lives at 133 South J Street. And I stayed with him numerous nights. And it's just stressful and terrible. You know, there's always trash in our yard. There's loud music playing, people banging pipes. I've had trouble getting my car out because of double parking. It's just, it's unacceptable. Again, we're not against the swap meet. We're not against anybody here. You all have the right to do what you want to do. And I know you guys make a living based upon it. But the location is just, as some people said, people, the swap meet's outgrown the location. There's nothing more really to say about it than that. And it's just unfortunate that my father is stressful from Thursday night until Sunday morning. Stressed out, I apologize. And it's unfortunate that I have to deal with that. He basically fears the swap meet because of all the things that are going to happen. The noise. He doesn't have the right to live in peace in his own home, which should be entitled by the Constitution. It's just unfortunate that that's gone so far out of, like, out of scale. It's like, he doesn't have anything to do. He has nothing to say about it. And it's great that you guys finally made your decision, and we really appreciate that. And hopefully you guys stick with your decision and you see a lot of people on the south side of town have peace and quiet on their weekends and let me to go to sleep, which is great too. And I apologize for being hastily dressed. I thought it started at 6:30 today and I came straight from work. I would have dressed up a little more like the rest of you fine gentlemen and ladies. So anyways, thank you for your time. I really appreciate giving the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Barry Marks. And I want to commend the council for separating the enterprise from its location. Because I think as community residents, we all see value in what the swap meet can bring. Just to give you a brief example, I have a friend from Sweden who was visiting. And she's now marketing director for the largest food company in Sweden. And when she came and visited, she had lived here before. And she came back and wanted to see the swap meet. Why? Because she wanted to integrate that experience because of the blend of cultures, which something in Sweden with relocations and refugee circumstances, all of Europe is rapidly changing. She wanted to integrate that into her marketing strategies and saw Lompoc and the swap meet as being an exemplary resource for her pursuing that strategy. And she had a wonderful time. One thing she commented on was everybody, treated everybody with dignity. And there was no scuffles, verbal or otherwise, there. And she felt, in spite of certain rumors she had heard, she, she felt nothing but safe. So just to let you know that the enterprise itself reaches beyond our city limits and has a great reputation. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Barry. I'm sorry, sir, you only. Yeah, you only get one chance.
I, I didn't know that I was going to be all limited to one minute. I have two minutes, and that'll conclude my three minutes. Right? Am I doing the math right?
You are.
Two plus one?
I'm sorry, our rules don't allow it. Thank you. But it's good math. Good math. Okay, anybody else for, come on, Mary.
I'm Mary Saladino, resident of Lompoc. Good evening, council members and audience. It is really good to hear this, be here for this opportunity to hear people talk. And I think we agree that some people do need opportunities to earn money. And we also agree that other people need their peace and quiet. And that is a very important thing as well. Another thing, I was listening to the comments. "There's nothing to do in this town?" Are you kidding me? I was just earlier this evening at the Lompoc High School parking lot. And I really want to commend our city staff and our county staff and even Vandenberg, Vandenberg Air Force staff for being there to present a wonderful opportunity for all the families to come and have free food, free entertainment, free pictures taken, free climbing on the cliff thing they've made there. And a jump house, there must have been four or five jump houses. And horses and equipment and goodies for the children to take home. And petting zoo. It was wonderful. But I did not see a lot of you there with your children. And the weather was perfect, just like it always is in Lompoc. So thank you so much for our law enforcement officers and our emergency response staff and the fire department being there to teach our children and to teach our community. And there were several churches there as well, providing free snow cones, free cotton candy, free hot dogs, free popcorn and water, I think, to drink. And so it was just a wonderful evening. And I don't know if you take the Lompoc record and read what's going on in our community, but there are lots of wonderful things going on. And this is not the only time these block parties are offered. They are offered at other times throughout the year. And this is my first one to attend at the high school. And I was just very pleased to see all the fun things that the children could do for families. And free food and free everything. So come down next time, okay?
Thank you, Mary. Okay, anybody else? All right, now we're down to the last round. This is for the really long speakers. Anybody have a five-minute speech they want to give us? Anybody? Bless you all. Okay, now we're going to, we're going to close oral communication on the swap meet. I'm going to ask one more time if there's anyone else here that want to talk on any other subject. Okay? And how to kill a cellphone. And now we'll ask the city attorney to share the, what you just shared because I think it's important everybody understands.
Thank you, Mayor. Because Councilmember Starbuck owns property within 500 feet of the area and because this isn't an agendized item, he can sit and listen to what's going on, but he can't participate.
So if you reach for your microphone switch, Bob's going to grab you. So anyone else out here to talk to us about anything else? Other than the swap meet? Okay, so now I'm going to close oral communication. So we're done with that. I'll bring it back to council. And Councilmember Ling, I think this was your item to start with, so I'll give you first bite at the apple.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we have an opportunity to even speak on this since it's not agendized.
We do have an opportunity to speak. We do not have an opportunity to make a decision.
It depends on what you all say. You can't get into a discussion as to the benefits and if you want to respond to some of the oral comments, but you can't begin to discuss this amongst yourselves unless what you want to do is ask for a motion, make a motion to put this on a future agenda to have a discussion about it.
Okay. So we'll go once around, except for Mr. Starbuck. He'll just sit there very quietly. And we'll, we'll just comment on what the people said. I'll still come back to you, Bob, because it was your item in the beginning.
Okay, I'm going to just comment on something that was said then. Yes. Okay. Someone out there talked about, a decision has already been made. And council decisions, when we make them, they are final at the time. There is an opportunity at some point where an issue can come back to be discussed again. My comment will be, if, if I start going too far, you tell me. If.
Do you have a gong?
If it came back, and then a month later, council chambers was, were filled up again with people wanting us to close it, do we change our mind again? This is my concern. Whoever made the comment about the decision was to be made, we should stick with it? I agree with that person. Is that okay?
So far, so good, no gong. Let me just go, let me just go in order. Is that okay, Ashley?
Um, yeah, would you mind if I actually go next? Would that be okay?
I have to be last, you know the rule. But you can be next to last. So Duane, you can be next. Flip for it. Don't forget to turn your mic on.
Very good conversation tonight. Since I've been going by that facility ever since it opened, since I lived in Magaliela Canyon before I moved to Lompoc, I've watched it grow and grow out of sight. I think what we said the other night is that, in that place, it does not meet its criteria. It's just too much for that one place. Now that, what also bothered me at the last meeting too, we had a four-year without a contract. That meant whoever ran the contract didn't come in and try and get a contract from the council or from the county, the city itself. So they just go ahead and run it that way. There's a lot of needs and change. I think the mayor, earlier on, they say there's a couple of spots in town that are available. It's up to the individual to go find those spots. I don't feel like changing my vote.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Really quickly, thank you. Thank you all for coming, whether you're in support or in opposition. This, for me, is refreshing to have this many people. Usually there's like, maybe 10 or less. So it's nice to see new faces, and I hope you come back and visit us. You know, I think my stance on the issue is relatively clear. I understand that there are absolutely issues that are associated with the swap meet that would need to be remedied. Noise, traffic, parking, whatever that be. But I also don't think that those are insurmountable or impossible to remedy with an effective contract and oversight of that contract. And perhaps, you know, negotiating a contract may be too difficult with the current concessionaire. But I would hate to see us walk away from this without even trying that step first. So that's the struggle that I'm having is I would hope that council would see the value, understand the challenges, but see that there's enough value to at least go down that path, as the mayor would say. So that's where I am standing this evening. And as a result, I will be requesting and making the motion that we agendize this item and allow staff to do some research with the concessionaire and see what would it cost, what would the cost recovery look like for the city? What are, you know, make sure that we can address all the issues. Perhaps there is an issue that ultimately can't be addressed. But I think that we haven't done the due diligence to determine that at this point. So that's my motion right now, is to re-agendize this item and allow staff to have some time to go and do some of that research with the concessionaire and figure out what the next step would be. So that's where I'm leaving it. Thank you.
Okay, that'll require a second and a third. Anybody, any takers? No takers, okay. Okay, back to me. So now I got to solve the problem, right, you guys? I think the core issue is that because of the way the swap meet operated at that location, it's created a lot of issues. And frankly, my observation, having gone down there many times, is that it's a victim of its own success. That being said, it is not the only place in Lompoc that we can do it. And when we passed this closure two weeks ago, the council members agreed with me that rather than close it at the end of the month, which would have been last Saturday, we should extend two months to the swap meet operator. And at that point, it looked like he was going to have a place in Mission Hills and he wouldn't even need it. But that didn't work out to find an alternate location. This evening I suggested two, but I'm pretty sure there are a couple more around town because I didn't spend a couple hours looking. So I think maybe Mike could take a little look around. And if you, Mike, find a good location and get the process going. And if the process takes longer than October 1st, but you're in the midst of the process, then I think you can come back to this council. And I think you could get a time extension at the current location for another month. and I think you could get a time extension at the current location for another month, if you were in the midst of the process of getting somewhere else for it. And I gave you two suggestions. There may be a couple more, and if you want to circle back around with me on Thursday, I'll take a little harder look. So, just so everybody understands the decision-making process here, the contract for the swap meet is expired, okay? Four years ago, but we got around to it. Okay, so, it takes an affirmative action by the council to begin a new contract. An affirmative action means that we have to have a majority. Councilmember Starbuck can't vote, so he's out of it. So, that means of the four of us that are remaining, three of us have to agree to take the affirmative action. Neither Councilmember Lingle or Councilmember Home doll are in favor of taking that affirmative action, okay? So, Mike, go to work, and let's see if we can't help you get going somewhere else, okay? All right. And we'll work a little harder next time to get the rules in the right place, so that we don't end up where we are today, with everybody unhappy and trying to find our solution. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, so that everybody can get out the door. Thank you all for coming, and being very, very polite. Handle oral communication, and we will now come to the consent calendar, which is a long one, so it'll take me a couple minutes to read it. So, this evening, for item one, we have approval of the minutes. Item two, we have approval of expenditures, a payroll voucher for 1.1 million, a voucher register for 306,000, a voucher register for 666,000, a voucher register for 299,000, a voucher register for 156,000, electronic payments principally for our electric utility of 2.6 million, manual checks in the amount of 24,000. Councilmember Costa will not participate in the vote on check number 320923 for 42,307.20 to the Lompoc Valley Community Healthcare Organization. Item number three, reappointment of the City of Lompoc representative to the County Library Advisory Board, that'll be Alice Down. Item number four, approval of the agricultural lease for unimproved land at River Bend Park. Good job for Kevin McKeon. We've had that land out there, and we haven't collected any money on it ever, and he's got it going. Adoption of ordinance 160614, amending portions of Chapter 9.44 of the Lompoc Municipal Code regarding loitering by registered sex offenders, the second reading, to align it with state law. Item number six, the Federal Aviation Administration Apron Rehabilitation Grant Application Approval of Resolution 5492.14. This is money that we're entitled to from the FAA, and it's a 90-10 grant, so they pay 90 percent, we pay 10 percent out of airport monies. It is not a general fund expense, it's the out-of-airport monies. Item number seven, the Industrial Disability Retirement of Tammy J. Clancy, adoption of Resolution Number 5944, a city employee who was permanently disabled on the job in a freak accident. Item number eight, the scope of work for the Water Treatment Efficiency Study. Item number nine, standards of apprenticeship for electrical line workers, adoption of Resolution 593814, and this is a new training program for, in conjunction with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, to bring our training program up a number of steps. Item number 10, Amendment Number One to the Memorandum of Understanding, the MOU, between the City of Lompoc and the National Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, the IEBW, Local 1245, and related changes to the City of Lompoc Classification and Compensation Plan, and the amended MOU between the city and the IEBW that addresses the training and compensation associated with the implementation of the 12,000-volt rubber gloving certification requirements for lead electrical line workers and electrical line workers, so rather than using long, cumbersome poles, they'll be using a lot of gloves. Number 11, implementation of a settlement agreement and the release of claims between certain Lompoc Police Officers Association members and the City of Lompoc. Approval of the amendment to the Lompoc Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding and Adopting a Resolution Number 594614, and this is to deal with an issue where dispatchers were not properly being compensated for meal breaks. And then, item number 12, approval of Resolution 589914, Title IV, Program for Transit Operations, as required by the federal grant, and basically, it's a plan and a plan book to meet the grant requirements. So, of those numerous items, what council member would like to pull an item? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item eight.
Okay, is there another council member? Lingle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like...
Or just a comment?
Actually, it's just, I want to comment on number 10. I don't want to pull it, but I just want to make a comment. Item number 10 is, it has, is an opportunity, actually, the city is going to increase our revenue, there's gonna be some increased expenses, but then, based on that, we're gonna have some savings. Could increase our revenue of 150, 180,000 dollars, something like that. When I'm reading this, I'm positive that we will make the expenditure, because that's guaranteed, but I'm not sure we'll actually realize the savings. So, I spoke with Mr. Garcia earlier, and he talked to our finance director, and they will be bringing back to us mid-2015, just a synopsis, a review of, did we actually realize the savings that we expect? So, we'll see that sometime mid-2015. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else need to clarify or pull an item? Councilmember Home Dollar Costa? Okay, so, now, I'll accept a motion for the consent calendar, with the exception of item eight, which will go to the end of the agenda.
So, moved.
Annis? Second. Yeah, I read you into the record. Okay, and is there any further discussion on the consent calendar at this time? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Number eight at the bottom. And now, we have council appointments to the youth commission, and, let's see here. So, I'll invite those persons who are here and wish to be appointed to the youth commission. First, the adult commissioner, Stephanie Salsito, are you with me? No, okay. Now, Fallon, Edith, Eric, Edith, or Valerie? That would be you two. You remember? I told you I had to remember your names. Come on over here and introduce yourself, one at a time.
Hello, I'm Olivia Brown. I'm not yet eligible to be a part of the youth commission, but I'd love to be once I am, and I'd love to get involved with the community once I am able to be appointed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for helping your community.
Hi, I'm Edith Vargas, and I would just like to be appointed to be in the youth commission, just to make a greater impact in our community as a teen.
Thank you, Edith. I think we have one mom.
Good evening, council. My name is Angela Nguyen, and I'm here representing my daughter, Fallon Nguyen. Earlier, or later toward July 25th, she did provide you with a letter. I hope that each of you received it. Thank you very much. So, then, I don't have to go over those items in the letter. Sometimes, the application does not allow for an extensive explanation of one's abilities and qualities. And actually, I am here this evening because Fallon is assisting with the family who's dealing with the hospice issue. So, I'm not getting the sympathy or, you know, pathetic vote. I am just telling you that this is a person who usually puts others before herself. And on the way down, I was just thinking, what else could I tell you about her that would tell you more than what I could put in writing? And what I wanted to tell you about her is that Fallon is a person of action, she's just not a word of talk. For example, on her varsity basketball team, a couple of years ago, there was a foreign exchange student who was basically homeless. Her host family was asking her to be removed from the home. All of the basketball girls felt very sorry for her, but it was only Fallon that offered our home, and we took her in for the last six months that she was here. Another thing that Fallon does is, very often in our home, we have a lot of prom and homecoming dinners, and we don't do anything fancy, because generally, we have 40, 50, 60, sometimes 70 people, kids, parents, whatnot. Fallon is the kid who will invite someone who's left out, someone who doesn't have a date, an exchange student who doesn't have a place to go, come on over to the Nguyen's, because that's the kind of people we are. The last thing I want to leave you with is a very good example of a person who's about the walk and not the talk. One day, I was helping my younger daughter's Girl Scout troop at Make a Difference Day, and Fallon was there also, kind of as the big sister. We arrived at the recreation center, because all of the volunteers get their free lunch, hot dog or chips, whatnot. Well, Fallon and I walked in, and there is a line of volunteers out the door waiting to be, receive their lunch. We just looked at each other, and we just knew what we needed to do. We walked to the front of the line, we walked around the counter, and we started helping the one poor kid that was there, taking the money, taking the orders, and the two that were behind in the kitchen. She never complained that she was hungry or tired. It was more important to help all those volunteers who gave up their salary to help Make a Difference Day. That's the kind of person that you need on the youth commission. So, I'm hoping today that you will re-review her questionnaire, whatever, application, consider her letter. She is one of very, very few Lompoc citizens that has completed the basketball program through Parks and Rec from start to finish. There's less than a handful, on one hand. So, I'm hoping that you will find her spot-on, and exactly what you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see if I can work this through a little bit. I believe that we have one appointment through 2016, and we could flip for it and give it to either Edith or Fallon, because they both were here, so I would choose to give them the longer appointment. And then, we have two through 2015, and in reviewing the attached applications, it seemed to me that Fallon, Edith, and Eric had the strongest applications, and then, there's a non-voting position which could go to Valerie, who had a strong application, and her point was, I'm a freshman, and I want to get started, so a non-voting position is kind of like putting somebody in a non-voting position on the Economic Development Committee, it's a stepping stone to the next place. As a matter of fact, I could make that motion, if it would make, if that would make this go forward. Councilmember Starbuck?
I was just gonna make a point. I planned on nominating Fallon anyhow. I had an opportunity a while back to meet and talk with her, not knowing who she was, and when I was discussing with her, you know, with a grade point average of 4.18, or whatever she said, then I looked at her car, and she had Physics for Dummies, I was sold on her then.
Okay. All right. Edith Vargas, right? Yeah, all right. Edith, call it. Heads or tails?
Perhaps there's another way of doing that, Mayor. Sorry.
It's too late, I already flipped the coin.
I was thinking the other thing we might want to look at is having an equitable distribution between Lompoc High School and Cabrillo High School students.
I'm not equitable. Sorry, just kidding.
No, I agree with that.
So, I was trying to just do that really quickly while we're sitting here, but I'm not sure, so, yeah, give me a minute.
Okay, I'm still going for the coin toss. Edith, heads or tails? Okay, year 2016. All right, so, I would move the approval of the adult, number one, the approval of Fallon for a term ending in 120 of 16, a term for Edith Vargas over here, ending in 120 of 16, a term for Eric, ending in 120 of 15, and a term, as a non-voting member, for Valerie Lauffer, ending in 120 of 15.
Excuse me, Mayor. I thought that I heard you say Edith Vargas was gonna be appointed to the 2016 term?
I did.
And then, you just said Fallon was gonna be appointed to the 2016...
Oh, sorry.
So...
She won the toss. Fallon's 2015, Edith's 2016, Eric is 2015, and Valerie is 2015, non-voting. And I'll give you my notes when I'm done.
And we would just encourage Olivia to attend the meetings until she's of age to apply for the commission.
Absolutely.
So, then, the one person that we haven't discussed, then, is Edith Lenas.
Edith Lenas, yeah.
And Mayor and council, I just wanted to encourage Edith Lenas as well to attend the meetings, though she has come to several meetings of the candidates that have, both Ediths have, and Eric and Valerie, so they have, you know, made a vested interest in doing this.
And chances are that someone will drop out in the course of next year, and they'll be prepared. Okay, and I'd be looking for a second.
I'll second.
We could have a third. Okay. And is there any discussion? Could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Thank you. And now, we come to a council appointment for the library board of trustees, and I would ask Barry Marx and Steve Chidoba. Barry? I know you're here. Steve, are you here? No, Steve? Okay, come on down, Barry.
...bio sketch, in case you're curious, who is this guy?
We got it already. It would... Yeah, we were attached, but thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Barry.
Well, I'm a strong, passionate supporter of the library, and things that I'm aware of, from meeting with the board, and Ms. Cadiente, who I think was an admirable choice. I'm taken by her vision, and I think it will benefit our entire community. There's Charlotte's Web, which is a project in flux. The library's relationship with the city is an ongoing issue that hopefully will be soon resolved, and the literacy program. I've become intimately involved with that through my wife, who participates in the literacy program, and in my visits with her client's family, I can see how the literacy program literally changes lives, brings people to be able to feel the confidence, to participate, encourages people to be able to approach the job market for employment, to be giving back to the community where they, some people, were in a position of only receiving. The increasing technology of the library system is wonderful to watch. Last time I walked into the library, every computer terminal was being used for education, for job searching. Some guys were playing games, but they were using it, and the children's library was filled. So, it's a resource in our community that we can all be proud of. I think we're getting a great bang for our buck, and I'd like to continue to support that and work with our leadership to make the transitions that are upon us with the library smooth and equitable to all concerned.
Any questions for Barry? Councilmember Costa?
Oh, I would just like to move the appointment.
Okay, any questions? Nope, everybody? Absolutely, go for it.
I move that we appoint Barry Marx to the library board of trustees.
I'll second. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Congratulations, Barry, and we're gonna pay you twice as much as all the other directors. It's a volunteer position. Okay, and now, we're gonna move to item number 15, consideration of a recommendation from the planning commission for an alternate mitigated amendment number two to the Burton Ranch specific plan, and amendment to the final environmental impact report, EIR, for the Burton Ranch specific plan, planning division file FEIR 0201, SP 0401, and she found the beautiful map. So, this is the entire tract, so it's easy to understand. Lucille?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, as the mayor indicated, this is consideration of a planning commission recommendation for an alternative mitigation to Transportation 1.2C, amendment number two to the Burton Ranch specific plan, an addendum to the final Ranch specific plan, an addendum to the Final Environmental Impact Report for the Burton Ranch specific plan, which is located on approximately 150 acres at the intersection of Highway One and Purvisima Road, Harris Grade Road. The staff recommends that the council consider the Planning Commission recommendation of approval, hold the public hearing, adopt Resolution Number 5945, Prince 14, adopting an alternative mitigation measure, and certifying the addendum to the Final Environmental Impact Report for the Burton Ranch specific plan area, waive further reading, and introduce Ordinance Number 1607, Prince 14, adopting Amendment Number Two to the Burton Ranch specific plan regarding alternative mitigation measure, Trans 1.2C, or provide alternative direction. On June 11th, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposal by the property owners, the Harris Grade Partners, for an alternative mitigation to a previously approved environmental impact report. The request to change is based on updated traffic information, and with that change and the traffic study that was approved and reviewed by city staff, alternative, or an addendum to the EIR was prepared. The Planning Commission considered the information, held a public hearing, and adopted a resolution recommending council approval on a 4-0-1 vote, with Commissioner Clark absent. The mitigation measure that is being requested to be changed is one of 104 mitigation measures on this particular project, and it has specifically to do with the intersection alignment at H and Highway One. The information that was previously presented in the EIR indicated a need for two southbound lanes. The new information that has come to light in the adoption of our new circulation element based on updated information and more, actually, better counts, traffic counts than we had previously, would allow the same level of service at the intersection with one southbound through lane. The mitigation measure required the applicant to obtain a Caltrans encroachment permit for the work. The applicant worked with Caltrans, and Caltrans looked at the design and looked at the information and preferred the alignment that is, currently is, on the intersection at this time, going southbound. We do have Mike Luther, who's a city engineer, who can address technical questions for you, if you have any, as well as Mr. Derek Rapp, who prepared the traffic study, and would be able to answer your technical questions as well. With this information, because the mitigation measure is in the specific plan, we would have to update it and change the language as identified in your staff report if the council chooses to go in that direction. So, based on that, that concludes my staff report. Mike, did you want to add anything? Available for any questions?
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. And, thank you, Ms. Breeze. In the staff report, it says that engineering, planning, and legal staff have worked with the applicant and their consultants on preparation of the proposed language. Were there any major points of contention, or is this, is this not really that large of a, of a change?
Now, as I said, it is one of 104, and the design for the balance of the project is still, I think, in process. They're still working on the infrastructure design. So, we will be, we have a good working relationship with the applicant and the engineers. So, this, when it came to light because of the Caltrans issue, as we have worked on it for a number of years, trying to get this so that the project would be able to move forward in a positive manner.
Great. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I'm in full support of this project, and would love to see this move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Homburg?
Yeah. What I'm hearing is that planning staff, Caltrans, and everybody right now is all favorable, so there's no disregard from anybody. So, it's nice to have a project come in that way. And yes, we need this project done as soon as possible.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Breeze, this is one of how many mitigations?
One of 104.
Are we opening the door for future discussion on any of the other?
No. In looking at this, the request was very specific for a mitigation measure that was to work with a Caltrans encroachment permit specifically. And looking at the language, and looking at the analysis that was provided, and the language that is in the resolution that the council will be adopting, if additional requests would come forward, it could potentially open up the EIR for additional work. And opening up the EIR would cause a great deal of difficulty in that there, since 2006, there have been a number of additional changes to SEQA, and many things that would come to light where this project has all of its approvals and entitlements in place. So, we don't believe that there would be, this would be setting a precedent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Starbuck?
No, I attended the Planning Commission hearing on the 11th of June, and after public comment, I'd be willing to make the motion.
Lucille, it seems to me that this whole need to make this change was driven by Caltrans not liking what was originally proposed. Am I correct in remembering that?
I think Mr. Rapp has had more conversation with them, and he may be able to address that more appropriately.
Come on down. You knew you came here for a reason.
Mayor, councilmember, I'm Derek Rapp with Penfield and Smith Engineers. I'm a traffic engineer, prepared the traffic report, and have been working with Caltrans and the city for a number of years. To answer your question, as far as Caltrans being the driver themselves, I don't know that that's the case. What happened was, there was a mitigation on the books from the EIR that was generated primarily from a calculation that was made at the intersection, and that determined, based on a number of assumptions, that determined that additional lane was needed. There was no evaluation of that time as how feasible that additional lane was. And when we were tasked, then, with laying it out and presenting it to Caltrans, the mitigation was much, much larger in scope than what was anticipated, than what was anticipated just from reading the mitigation. So, Caltrans, in turn, in reviewing that, directed us to maybe go back and look at other alternatives that were less in magnitude that they would accept. And the one that we came up with, based on looking at all the new traffic information, is one that Caltrans is in support of.
And the new signal sequencing brings the signal into their standard plan rather than the way it is now?
Correct.
The way, the way signals are sequenced has been changed, and little by little, they're bringing all of them across the state into the same signal sequencing pattern, so people have an expectation.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to open this for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to talk to us about this item? Going once? Come on down.
Russell Gibson, and I was just looking at the project, and I was a little confused. They was, the design was two lanes coming southbound, and what was the final resolution? Was it...
The final resolution is a single lane, but changing the way the signal operates, and what they determined that the intersection counts that were originally used were not accurate. And so, using the current intersection traffic counts, how many cars go through, and how many cars will be coming out of the project, by changing the signal sequencing and intervals, the same thing could be accomplished without the second lane. And the, kind of the difficulty was, putting a second lane in up at the top was maybe not as problematic as getting it on the other side of the intersection.
Oh. And, but, Caltrans' recommendation was that it be just the single lane, then?
Yes. Caltrans recommended the single lane, as opposed to the double lane, which was in our original recommendation.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. And it's their highway, that's kind of the important part, so they get, they get the last vote. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment, and we'll come back to the council. And who said they wanted to make a motion? I'm sorry.
That was my, so, I'd like to also throw in that this did include the Public Safety Center, the Hancock, the annexations, and everything else that's happening up there. So, this isn't just this project, it's everything that's around it also. But, I'd like to go ahead and move staff recommendations.
I'll second. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. City Administrator, you ready to proceed with item number eight?
Certainly.
All right. And who would you like to have make this presentation?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bean to come up, but I might preliminarily ask, Member Starbuck had asked for the, I didn't really pull, and I don't know if there's something in particular he'd like us to address, or would he just like us to air a summary of the report we've submitted?
I'll be really frank here. I received my binder on Wednesday. The Utility Commission had received it quite a while before, which I was given a copy of. I have spent lots of time looking at it, and I think, truthfully, that what Mr. Marjim and Smith have done here is compile a whole bunch of information. I mean, far more than we're going to comprehend that Mr. Bean's going to be able to give us. I think we would need to start the whole presentation with, what is this? Why are we here? What are we going to do? What is the long-range effect of this plan? How are we going to use this information in the future? I mean, we have it all here, but I just, it's so much information. I think that we should bring out some of the key parts, because if I'm having this much trouble looking at it for this many hours, I know that people in the public are having trouble. I don't think anybody on the dais here can sit there and say, "Well, this is due to this and due to that." And it really is our baseline for what we are doing, and where we need improvement, what needs to happen. So, I would really like to ask council to consider maybe a little bit of a presentation that's in a layman world.
Right. And certainly, we can, we can at least begin that approach tonight. I'm probably going to ask Mr. Bean to give an overview of what the process was about, what we were trying to accomplish. I'd be happy to chime in myself, having, kind of, kind of came late to the party, if you will, on the process, but nonetheless, found valuable the information that was provided. And I have some takeaways from what I've reviewed of it. Might be a little different than how most people would see it. I'm not meaning this to brag or trot out my credentials at all, but I do have a somewhat of background on both the water and wastewater side. In fact, on the, as, I know the council is aware, I sat on the credentialing board for the American Public Works Association, which was a six-member committee governing these processes for 20,000 agencies in North America, and a pretty selective process. And it's with that eye that I was looking at what I was seeing, where our opportunities for improvement are, and some other things where I think maybe the assessment might make a number that looks challenging, that actually I see has a great opportunity. And it's not just me being, you know, rosy-eyed, trying to, you know, make something good out of something that's not, but actually seeing that there are some things, because of the way they were analyzed and reported, on the surface appear negative, but for our purposes and where we're trying to head, really are good opportunities. But, Mr. Bean, maybe you can give, well, an overview of the process and the report.
Mary Lynn, councilmember Starbuck, other members of the council, members of the public, the public at home. I'd like to begin with a little history of how did we get here to, to the point that we asked staff to submit data to the American Water Works Association for a benchmarking survey. The benchmarking survey doesn't really have much meaning unless of all the other plants that gave their data were very similar in size and nature to ours. Now, I'll go to the history of how we got there and made a decision. If you'll recall, during the rate hearings for water and wastewater, we had a new Utility Commissioner, Mr. Mosby. He visited our wastewater plant, and he visited our water plant. Our wastewater plant did an excellent job of explaining what went on there, and he came back to you and told you that the new wastewater plant operated in his mind very efficiently. His visit, a visit to the water plant did not go so well. He didn't get his questions answered the way they should have been, and he came back to you and told you that the water plant was very inefficient. And because he talked about motors, we understood that to mean that we used too much power in certain operations. And we went through, that seed was planted, that that water plant was inefficient. And from that point, we went to some ridiculous proposals, such as shutting down the water plant for the whole weekend and emptying the tanks, of which, if you recall, our fire chief's assessment of when we had our new fire insurance rates, those tanks being full all weekend were very important. Our water pressure throughout the city got us a very much improved fire rating for all our businesses. So, our water plant, the way it's operated, does a very good job. With that said, we went on, and you passed the new rates to take care of getting our two utilities back in good financial shape. At the end of that, councilmember Lingle asked for an efficiency study on the water plant, because that question had been raised by Utility Commissioner. And following up on that, we had our next Utility Commission meeting at the water plant. We toured the water plant. We tried our best to explain how things operated. Councilmember Lingle was there for that meeting, as was Mr. Mosby, Utility Commissioner. I, at that time, took a few minutes to try to explain how much it costs to do an efficiency study, and what that might entail. I made some estimates of what kind of energy savings we might expect from spending another $3, $4 million on a plant that had just been upgraded in 2008 and 2009, with three new pumps, three new, four new booster motors, and a computerized system that decides what pumps run when, based on the amount of water we need to serve. It is, in fact, a fairly efficient system. It was state-of-the-art at the time it was designed. Today, could an engineer find a new system that would be a little more efficient? Certainly. Certainly could. But it may cost us $3 or $4 million to put that in place. And we only have six years on a brand-new system. That's not efficient to throw away an existing working system and then spend more money on another new one, chasing a few percentage points in electricity savings. All right. After that discussion and a tour of the plant, in conjunction with Tim Smith, our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, and Mr. Mosby, we came to the conclusion it'd be a good idea to submit all of our data for both plants to the American Water Works Association for the benchmarking survey, to give us, for no more than to give us an idea of the areas at our plant that might be able to give us some efficiencies and savings. When we did that, we knew full well that it all depended upon what other plants submitted. When we did that, we knew full well that it all depended upon what other plants submitted. This year, for that, there were 37 water operations that, uh, submitted the survey. Only 16 of them were in the western United States. Uh, six, only six serving communities of 50 to 100,000, kind of the range of what our plants serve. Uh, of the wastewater operations, only three were located in the western United States, two serving communities of 50 to 100,000. There were about 103 individual benchmarks, as councilmember Starbuck has noted, the paperwork is extensive of what you're looking through. Uh, staff and the utility commissioner looked, took two different meetings to look through all this data and come to their conclusions. For, uh, something on the order of 75 percent of these benchmarks, we fell pretty well in the median range. Many of them were very detailed, they required our finance department to gather data and put together an input. Some of the questions are very hard to even figure out what they wanted. We had to go back to staff at, uh, the Waterworks Association and question how we should put it, put in, input our data. One of the, one of them, obviously, we put our data in different than everybody else, and that's explained in the report. But in general, we did pretty well on 25 percent of those. The ones where we didn't do well were where we might expect. Energy used per, per million gallons per day, we were high in that. Uh, we were high in number of employees per million gallons per day. Why do we think that was the case? Well, we have two very sophisticated plants. We have a wastewater plant that was just rebuilt, spent 106 million dollars on it. We have to produce water that's nearly drinkable because it's discharged into a navigable waterway of the United States, and it's in a river with steelhead and numerous other endangered species. So, we spend a lot of money on that wastewater plant to produce this high-quality discharge. Our water plant, we have a complete filtration system, a softening system. Those are both highly, uh, energy use, high-energy users. Now, the capacity, here's the important part. We took a look at these benchmarks that we were scoring below the median level in. And in most cases, if you said we would be able to produce or sell 75 percent more water, we would go right up to be in the median range if we're able to sell more water. These two plants, in my estimation, were designed for growth of this valley. The growth hasn't occurred yet. We're poised to take care of this growth. Economic development can happen without spending millions of dollars on these plants. We can go to the water plant and nearly double the water output without hiring another employee. That's a good spot to be in, not a bad spot. But, if you calculate our efficiency and score it against these other plants, we don't obviously look too good, we fall below the median. Uh, the other factor that we can't tell from reading this report, and you couldn't tell from reading all the data you have there, is, are all the plants, the, uh, for instance, the wastewater plants like Santa Maria, their wastewater goes out into ponds and sits, soaks into the sand, they're done. Are the water plants like Vandenberg Village Community Service District, they pump it out, run it through one sand filter, throw a lot of chlorine in it, and send it out to your house? You can't bathe with it, you can't drink it, everybody up there has a water softener, even though you're not allowed to, but they have one. So, the water in Lompoc quality is higher. We have, in my estimation, a pretty efficient operation based on the underutilized capacity that we have. Uh, the report that's in front of you was, the commission took two separate meetings to go over it and create this report. Their recommendations are in here, and, and I think the, one of the most important ones is, they felt like an efficiency study of the water plant was not warranted at this time. We should probably get working on one in five to seven years, so we can start designing when the current, uh, pumps and motors wear out. Now, another important finding that we looked at in the city code is, while growth and selling more water and pushing more wastewater would help, uh, our efficiency calculations, it would help level out our utility bill increases in the future, we could increase the denominator by more people, more customers. Our current city code, written in another drought time, the early 90s, states that every new development has to offset their complete water demand by retrofitting toilets, sinks, showerheads, et cetera, throughout the community. My conservation employee tells me that we've pretty much exhausted anybody coming in at any large number at retrofitting their apartment buildings. So, how can we get past having new development and try to sell more water and become more efficient? Again, we're in the middle of the drought, a drought. We have a really good opportunity. So, the second, uh, recommendation is that we change our current resolution that implements the ordinance on development project impact, uh, water supply, to allow these, permit in lieu fees to look at, uh, ways that we can use recycled water from our water plant, such as to water lawns and playgrounds and crops, maybe, uh, use it, use it again in construction for watering the soils for compaction. Years ago, we did that, but with all the rules and regulations coming from the water board, that had to be stopped. Any use of this wastewater on other, uh, in any other means throughout the city is gonna take a very expensive engineering study. And we would like to come back to you with a resolution that, uh, changes our current one and allows these in lieu fees. So, in the best scenario, we'll continue with growth in the city, and if we could get to two or 3 percent growth over the next few years, sell a little more water, put programs together that use the recycled water in, uh, beneficial ways, we think we'd be in good shape. And that's my quick summary of what happened and how it happened. I disagree to some extent that this benchmark survey is our baseline for the future. It is not. We compared our energy usage for both of the plants with the results from the 2011 survey, and we were right online. So, I think more of the plants that submitted this year were more like Santa Maria and Vandenberg Village. And I'm sure you have many more questions.
Just a couple.
Um, hang on. Chief, you want to bite of the apple first?
Do you mind if I just take a moment?
Absolutely. And Larry, you missed one thing.
That'll be fine.
You forgot to mention how much water conservation we've had over the last...
We've reduced our water usage more than the required 20 percent.
Which has helped us.
We've gone from, in the 150 gallons per person per day here in the city, to something on the order of 100. In the winter, it's below 100, now in the summer, it's 110, 150 gallons per day, per person, doing a good job.
And the state, the state's goal is 100, so we're right on.
Chief, some general concepts, just in, and forgive me for what I repeat of what Mr. Bean shared, but I just wanna give this overall context in as plain English as possible and, uh, lose the technical side. Overall, a, a benchmark study is helpful. It's helpful for the information the guy gives you, and it does compare, um, allows you to compare it to other operations. As Mr. Bean pointed out, though, there are things that it is and there are things that it's not. One of the challenges we find is that every location, whether you're talking water or wastewater, I'd say particularly on the wastewater side, but both for water and wastewater, um, what you're able to do, how you're able to do it is very specific to your location. Uh, just looking, and by virtue of the fact that particularly wastewater is a good example, uh, that you're located in California versus you're not located in California, it's gonna make a big difference on the things you have to do to go from the start to the finish of the process. And so, um, there, there is information, it's valuable information you can find in the benchmark study. There are also going to be things that you have to take in the context that, really, when you're looking ultimately for improvement, you wanna improve on you, yourself, your operation, and what you're able to do in your environment. Uh, that is as important or more important than understanding what the averages are or the quartiles are for other operations, other agencies. Doesn't mean that it's valueless or meaningless, there's some great value that can come out of that. But ultimately, we wanna, we wanna excel and get better, um, based upon challenging ourselves and our own particular environment requirements, uh, size, uh, growth patterns and the like. Uh, I really do wanna emphasize most what some of the numbers in here that look like they're problematic, to me, I see them differently, and I see them, I, I do see them as opportunities. Because, uh, with some of these numbers, they are going to be competing to the goals that you're looking for. Uh, in other words, efficiency is a good idea. Where you get optimal efficiency with these plants, usually assuming you're doing everything you should, your design efficiencies are going to be found at near capacity. If you're at near capacity, you have no room, appreciable room for growth. And that's one of those things where I'd say, well, we know efficiency is important to us, but for us to be the most efficient, we wouldn't be in poise for the economic development aspect of it. So, I think it's important to recognize and celebrate the wonderful position we're in, both on the water and wastewater side, that as we go out and we are trying to attract in jobs, um, whether through commercial, industrial, uh, oper, operations and applications, or in residential development even, that we aren't one of those communities sitting there saying, and how will we possibly support these jobs? We are poised to be able to support those jobs, and that's a wonderful thing. Now, um, I'm not gonna come in and, you know, Monday morning quarterback the situation. You might say, okay, that's good, I guess, that we have purchased additional capacity, but did we have to have this much additional capacity? Because it's a lot of available capacity we're carrying. Like I said, I can't, I'm, I don't wanna come in and Monday morning quarterback, I mean, we all could, after the fact, say, well, you might have dialed it in better this way. Lompoc is a difficult area to, to forecast succinctly what's going on, for instance, just with what programs may be developing or not developing in the base, might drive a whole lot of what our increased needs and decreased needs are. And so, it's almost like you need a bigger, uh, potential variation or cushion, if you will, to equip yourself for more of the range of possibilities. So, I'd say, regardless of how succinctly those decisions were made in the past, the fact is, where they bring you today is, you've got an operation that is running fairly efficiently, both water and wastewater side, for the configuration we're in, and we're poised to be able to support job growth into the future. If we can find a way to translate that capacity, and that's what, some of what Mr. Bean was alluding to, to make it possible that, well, rather than requiring as it currently is that, uh, new development coming in's gotta go find its own water and other capacity, that we basically provide the credits for that, take that money that people would pay, invest it in, uh, water reuse process, processes in the future, then the overall benefit's going to be, you've got adequate infrastructure that's gonna carry you out decades without, uh, appreciable further, uh, investment. This is just a wonderful position to be in, but it means in the meantime, we have a little less efficiency operationally at times, we've got greater, um, energy use going on at some times. And, um, those, those are just the balancing parts we, we, we play. The final thing I'd say is, uh, even though it's not normally on your, the, the list of priorities we look at as much, outside of, um, the water and wastewater operations, within those operations, quality is an extremely important issue. And I would say, as I was looking through, uh, we scored very well on our, our quality processes, protecting our water supply and things like that. Those are things that sometimes go unsung in, um, in assessments like this, because we're pointed and looking at other things. Uh, but I don't wanna trivialize at all that those are critical areas and the operations are doing well in that regard, so.
A short question here would be then, so what do we intend to do with this benchmark survey?
Well, for, for me personally, I'm, I'm planning to work with, with, uh, Mr. Bean and with both operations, both on the water and wastewater side, be, because there are some nuggets to be found. There's definitely some gold in here to recognize. I've recognized a few things where I wanna sit down with staff and go over and say, you know, I think this is something, regardless of our configuration, where maybe we're in the, uh, lower to middle quartile where I think we should be excelling, you know, in other words, our value system, what we've collectively, uh, what you've adopted and what we collectively have embraced, uh, would say, we've got areas we can improve. And I think that's where some of the great value is in on that. Or we've got other areas where we've said these areas are important, and we've done well, and we need to validate and communicate to our crews, hey, you're doing a great job in this area, let's make sure it's not accidental, that you're intentional in what, what we're, um, achieving. In other areas, we can say, okay, we're not doing great here, uh, but that's understandable because of this excess capacity, for instance, which is driving 26 out of the 103 performance metrics that we've got, where we've got some size issues. Doesn't mean that we write them off, but let's say, okay, if we can't score exceedingly well because of that situation compared to the other respondents, can we do better ourselves, given our situation? And it's, that self-challenge is important. So, I think those are the ways we're gonna take practical application of this. And I'd also say it doesn't stop here, because you, you need to constantly examine yourself, examine yourself against others. Um, this is AWA, um, benchmarking, and it's important, it's a great organization, it's valuable. Uh, we aren't poised or ready to do it yet, but I, I'm, I'm a strong believer in the APWA accreditation process. It takes time and investment, it's probably a three-year process to take yourself from start to becoming accredited. I think ultimately, um, that's the process where it gets tailor-made to, uh, to us and our operation, but at the same time making sure we're holding industry best management practices across the board, not just in the technical areas, but also in the non-technical areas. And I would say, this is a great start to have us start doing that planning that it would take, and then start lining ourselves and positioning ourselves to really make a run. That would be an all-hands effort, I mean, that's not just like one person doing paperwork. That's the entire team being committed to saying, you know, we, we believe in ourselves, we're excellent, we're gonna go up against that test that ultimately determines and will brand how well we're doing. And for me, that's, that's the path I'd like to go. We're not prepared there yet, but this and other things we can look at can get us prepared to start going in that direction. I would love for us to be down that, that accreditation path, and, uh, that would be, I, I think, do great things for the, for the crew, for the operation, and for the community. And it's always good, then you're getting that outside validation where you'll have people come in, we don't have to sit there and say, hey, we're doing a great job. We'll have the industry standard and experts that'll come in and be able to verify to you that indeed, they're doing a great job, they're doing a great job.
The, the last question I have, and this is kind of off of the benchmark, but our water plant was built 69, we're there, within, within a few months. Now, granted, our...
I couldn't say that with any certainty, but it sounds reasonable.
Yeah, well, our capacity, let's just say at that point that our plant had a capacity of 8 million gallons instead of the 10 that it has today. We come back now to 45 years later, the city has doubled in size, our rates have gone through the roof. What is the explanation? When we've always, we've just been professing that we'd need the growth, we need, we can handle 70... We come back now to 45 years later, the city has doubled in size, our rates have gone through the roof. What is the explanation? When we've always, we've just been professing that we'd need the growth, we need, we can handle 75% more water, but if we went at our same formula, we would have a 350% rate increase as we did compared to what you had in '69 as to what we have now. Do you follow the path I'm saying here?
Well, yeah.
There is inflation, there's power, there's other factors, the lime costs more, but that much?
Some of that, if I can, some of that, here's one of the big challenges that I see that goes on, and it goes to the bottom line of what you're paying, but it's part of the planning. And forgive what might seem like an irrelevant comparison, it really is relevant on the principle I'm trying to get across. If I'm running a lemonade stand and I'm trying to project what I'm going to need to expand, I get to do that very incrementally. I need to bring a little more water, a little more ice, a little more sugar, a little more number of lemons, and I can grow as I see it's going very incrementally. You don't have that opportunity with water treatment or wastewater treatment capacity. We really have to look into this crystal ball about how much you're going to grow and what's going to happen with conservation measures and use patterns in the community. And you're guessing all that, and then you have to commit to a certain level of infrastructure. And you don't get to do that incrementally because the cost would really be astronomical if you just tried to step up a little bit. So you're trying to say, how big of a bite do we have to bite off for our plant expansion for this to be optimal where we're putting out the least amount of cost on a per, on a million gallon treated basis per day, and at the same time not having to come back and rebuild and rebuild and rebuild? And so, you're doing this with the crystal ball with a lot of variables out there that you believe about the community. My observation is that as I go back and I read past general plan additions, not that I spend a lot of time doing that, but I've looked at them, and I see what we had projected at various times, we've consistently, the group, the group belief seemed to consistently overestimated what the city's growth is. And I think a lot of that, not because they're bad predictors necessarily, a lot of that comes from things, you know, like what's happening with the basin. You know, at times there are things that are anticipated that don't pan out, but we had to take a stand and make a decision about how we're going to grow. And so, those are the sorts of things that happen. And if you guess incorrectly, and you can get hurt if you miss it on either side. You could find yourself, if you don't have enough capacity, that you have this great opportunity to show up on your porch, and everybody's ready to grow, and you don't have a place to put them, so you're not going to get to enjoy the expansion that otherwise you could have. And the flip side says, well, you could have also guessed too high, and therefore you built excess capacity. So it's, like I said, that's why I'm hesitant about being a Monday morning quarterback on those things, saying, well, yeah, you know, if we'd all been here, we would have guessed this one better. Well, maybe yes, maybe no. Because I'm trusting they operated with the best information they had available in their crystal ball at the time. And then as reality comes around and we don't grow as much, and issues like that, then we find ourselves, and at the same time, we're finding more efficient ways to operate, and we're educating the public, and they're learning how to conserve differently. That's how those excess capacity numbers and the costs being driven by excess capacity play themselves out.
Dirk, I'd like to have you look at it from a little different perspective.
The mine? No. Go ahead.
Well, let's say a different issue, other side of the coin. Our wastewater plant was built with a federal grant. What did the councils before you fail to do? They would never raise rates enough to start putting money away to build the next plant. I can't fix and make the budget correct when 38% of the wastewater budget is paying a debt back to upgrade a plant that we didn't save any money for. And in fairly recent rate increases for both water and wastewater, the councils, bless them trying to do a good job for their citizens to keep their citizens' expense down, didn't put enough money away to rebuild the infrastructure. This time, you listen to the consultant that we needed to put money away to save for the next day when things break and need replacement, we need to start replacing the old clay pipes south of town up in the hills that are starting to fail. We need to start putting the money. That's why we had this sudden big percentage increase in the rates.
Mr. Smith, you look like you have something maybe to add to the discussion.
I just wanted to follow up on what Larry had just mentioned. Tim Smith, Waste Water Division, Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. It's very true, and a lot of communities, I talk with other, my counterparts with other agencies and other districts, and they're all in a similar situation. None have really planned well for the lack of funding. Basically, the old plant was a federal grant, had a lot to do with it, you know. What we got on the 100, you know, 100-plus million was a low-interest loan and bonding, you know, so that, it's not the same. It's, we have to pay for those. That's a major change in what's happened. And, you know, if I look at anything different from the 60s to today, you look at the increased regulation, you look at the, you know, you can look at the increased complexity of those regulations and how we can make those effective, how we can meet those requirements, and then you look at how we're going to fund it, it's all become extremely complex. Much, it's a much different ballgame out there right now. And as communities, we're just going to have to look at it that it's now at the community's shoulders to bear the burden of these costs right now. That's how it's set up, so.
And I do.
Makes it very difficult.
I do want to echo some of both what Mr. Bean and Mr. Smith said in that regard. I think it's very admirable that this council and recent councils are more resolved to address the issues and not kick the can down the road so much. There are communities where that's definitely going on in spades now, when even if it has been done somewhat before, it's really becoming now where they're just feeling like, let's take care of today and let the next generation deal with the fallout of not being forward, planning forward thinking and swallowing the tough medicine sometimes that goes with that in adopting rates. So, you know, we're not, none of us enjoy when it's come around, have to recommend increasing rates. We're not looking for an easy ride or a free ride on anything, but we just recognize that sometimes the longest-term, best financial decisions you can make are if you bite the bullet a little in the short term, and the power to collect and save that money so that you're going in and balancing your investments in infrastructure between cash and borrowing is better than just doing entire borrowing when that happens. So unfortunately, some of what we're having to do today is recover for some missed targets from the past. But the good thing is, we've decided we're going to buckle this thing up, we're going to address it, and we're going to be better prepared all the way through the future. And right now, you're in great shape looking forward to the future. I know it hurts some for today, but you're in great shape for the future, and we just need to get out there and bring in that many more jobs and businesses to better utilize the capacity. But it, what it does mean is, assuming we can continue those growth patterns, then the pain that other communities would have and have to face for that growth, we simply aren't going to have to. So we're in good position in that regard.
Thank you. I would conclude by asking you to accept staff's recommendations and pass that.
Thank you.
Don't go away. There's more lights. Councilmember?
Yeah, it's interesting to listen to it since I've been in this town for a long time seeing what had happened. When we built the original sewer plant, agriculture asked them to have a pipeline coming out so agriculture could use the water. The city didn't do it, but there was farmers who would have used that water, and there's farmers that can now. The only water you, you know, only thing you can't put it on is something you eat freshly. You can put on anything else. I think agriculture went out and hustled around it because it's all around it, may be interested in using some of that so you don't have to dump it down the river, and we know we like to have it other places, but getting pipelines to it, that's the other cost that we have going into it. The other thing on building some of the facilities and being too big now, you got to realize that in the 70s, everything was going strong, and all of a sudden, 1974, the bottom dropped off, and the missile industry went downhill in the handback there because they kept blowing up missiles, and the downturn in the economy in the local area because people moved out and Vandenberg shut things down. We had a number of schools. We had 14,000 students in the district in 1973, and by '75, we were down to 9,000. So that many families. So the projection was out there, seeing what was coming down the road until what happened on that. So there's a lot of the projections of that. But also, you had, going back to what Patrick was saying, is that we had some councils and we had some mayors back in the 70s and 80s that did not want to put the right price on it. I lived in the county at that time. We've seen that coming up. Said, no, I don't want to do that. I don't want to be the one putting that on. And that goes clear back in that timeframe, and then it all got caught up. I think there's some things we can do. Also, somewhere along the line, the Mission Hills may need someplace to take their sewage, and we can utilize and see how we can talk to them on the toes project and bringing that sewage down into Lompoc, instead of pumping it back over the hill and then into the groundwater table, which eventually gets in our groundwater table. So I think that's some things that we need to look out there, put it on the table, and start talking, see how we can work the district. Because we got the capacity, why can't it work out for them, so.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Yeah, that was going to be the vein of my comment, which is, I understand the idea of trying to expand the use of reclaimed water. That, of course, makes sense to me. I understand that argument. I think, though, and this may not be the right place, but some of the questions I've gotten from the community really is the status of the water situation in Lompoc. As you know, I mean, it's on the news every day about the drought, and so a lot of questions are, you know, what is Lompoc's situation? There's state legislation, how does that impact our utility? And again, I don't know if that's, right now is the right time to discuss that, but I think that should be addressed. Because, you know, we talk about increased capacity, and I, you know, maybe it sounds crazy, but I'm thinking, you know, is there anybody who is in a really severe situation that we could sell water to at this time? You know, I don't know if that's way out, you know, out in left field, but just to increase capacity short-term. So those are the things that have been running through my mind as we've been having these discussions. And I understand what you're saying, the challenge of the study. I see that there are clear challenges, particularly because there's not a lot to compare ourselves to. I think that the sample size was so small that it's relatively skewed. But, City Administrator, I just wanted to also express support for getting that accreditation. I think that that would be a good process as well. So those are my comments for now. And again, I don't know if we can bring it back or if tonight's the night, but I think the public needs to know the status of the water situation in the community.
I think she's asking for well heights, and I think you can probably speak to that.
Well, I would just say in general, we're better positioned without getting into the details of giving a full water status report, but it's a great question, and I know people are concerned out there. We are in, obviously, we're concerned as any community is over the drought situation. We're all praying for a return to normal precipitation levels that'll help everyone. Fortunately, we're in a better position to withstand more severe drought conditions for a longer period of time than some other communities are. And a lot of that has to do with processes that have been put in place and the change, you know, the communities being applauded is because of the change in their practices, mindset in how they use water. Even in abundant times, they are being very responsible as citizens on their average water consumption. We also have, sit in a little better position with water supply issues than some others do. A good compare and contrast right now is like with Solvang, who has a different water supply altogether, relies on a, you know, state water project is their long-term water supply, and currently, in the current conditions, it means they're only getting a 5% water volume allocation. And so, you know, they're in a very severe, we're not cut to 5% of our supply, they are. But the flip side to that is, if you look at their per capita water usage, they're still, even now, in this desperate time that they have, their per capita water usage is much higher than ours, much higher than ours. And so, you know, at one point or another, yeah, we're concerned as well, but we're just positioned better than most, so we're not in a panic state, let's say, that I would, I don't think I'm being overtly dramatic when I say, from a water standpoint, they're in a panic state. I heard their mayor said to me a couple of weeks ago, we only have three problems in Solvang. Those are water, water, and water. And I, so that's not where we are. We're concerned, we've got a plan in place that if it becomes prolonged or intensifies, we have steps we can take to implement to, you know, meet that situation. We're not hitting those trigger points just yet, but we are, we're watching the situation, monitoring closely. In terms of selling water to folks, that's where it gets a little tougher because like, you know, it's, you've got to be able to physically move the water, be able to exchange the right for the water, and those things aren't always readily done, agency to agencies, and sort of like, you either have to have the planets aligned, or you have to set up agreements well in advance of the need for those to occur. Mr. Bean, anything?
I'll speak to our position in regard to the resolution and law that the Water Board passed two weeks ago. Our ordinances that were put in place in the 90s comply with those new laws, and so we're in pretty good shape. We mailed out these reminders with our July billings, and we'll do it again for the rest of the customers in August. And the main points of that are, do not water between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. That's when you have a lot of evaporation and wind loss. Don't let any of your water run on hard surfaces. If it's running over the sidewalk, over your driveway, shut your sprinkler system off and readjust. Don't wash your car with an open hose. You have to have a nozzle on it that automatically shuts off. Don't wash down your driveway or your sidewalk, just sweep the dirt up and put it in your garbage can. I think if you do your work to try to save water, it'll be worthwhile. We're in pretty good shape with the water levels and our basin at this point. We had a very good release from the lake last fall, and it recharged very well. But we're, even though we may be due another release, the water's not up there to release to us. So if the drought continues another year or two, we'll have water, but it will become degraded, and we'll have to spend more money in the process at the water plant. But we have a water plant that can process it. So again, do a good job at continuing to conserve, and things will get better. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. This discussion's been going on for quite a while, and I, when Mr. Wyman Miller mentioned a couple of times rate increases, I just want to remind everyone that we are not discussing rate increases this evening. I just saw a couple of people twitching when we talked about, those were past rate increases. The other thing is, the situation we're in with decreased efficiency at certain times because of because of our volume needed, almost every business, if you're, and our own households have this same issue. I've spent forty-five years in healthcare. If, in a couple hours, if you go to the emergency room over here at our local hospital, you'll see a physician and a nurse possibly doing nothing, okay? Yet I'm sure you don't want our hospital emergency room saying, you know, between the hours of midnight and three AM, we very seldom have any patients. So let's send the doctor and the nurses home, and hopefully we don't get any accidents. And that's pretty much what we'd be doing if we shut down the water on weekends. I mean, we'd say, all right, we don't need it during that time. So every business, you have your peaks and your valleys, and you kind of look for the middle rate. I'm sure, well, if, some of us are, have had businesses before and the same thing. You look for the average and you try to staff at the average. There's times when, I don't know if we've ever had a demand that's been too high that we haven't been able to meet. I don't think we have, but other businesses have. I know the hospital at times, you know, we may have that one doc in the emergency room at three AM because we very seldom have it, and all of a sudden, there's a multi-car accident and we have to end up calling in a second doc. Those things happen. Anyway, I'd be willing, have we had public comment yet? We're not going to end this thing here.
I'm still waiting to talk.
I'm going to give you the floor. Councilmember Holmdahl has one more bit.
Just one real quick thing, so people understand, there is a shortage of water coming in, in the canyon, Magalita Canyon, which used to serve city of Lompoc all its water at one time. There's four springs. Only one now is working out of the four. So there is some water shortage coming out of Magalita Canyon. That means every mountain range that had that has a shortage. So what we've been doing here in Lompoc to maintain our water, we use it as less as we can, and now it's an efficiency.
Hey, so I just want to deliver some good news. We have an interconnect with the Mission Hills Community Service District. And every so often, one of us has a problem. And happily, we can deliver water to each other. And so that's a benefit to both of us. The Vandenberg Village Community Service District would love to have an interconnect with us because they would like to blend some of our really nice water with some of their not-quite-so-nice water. But unfortunately, there's no pipe there yet. And we were kind of hoping that in the, within the Toews project, there might be a way to get from point A to point B, but that really hasn't worked out. So someday, maybe that'll help. For those of you who've been council watching for a while, I did quite a bit of work on providing some ag wells to run city parks to take us off the water plant system. Here is an opportunity to do that in a different way, to use our wastewater plant outfall to water particularly city parks and to provide water to larger users for irrigation. Now, with every solution, you create a problem. So if we take a large city park like Ryan Park off the water system, we lower the cost of the general fund by supplying inexpensive reclaimed water from the water treatment plant, but we do, we reduce the amount of water that we're selling. And the city parks and the, the school district lawns burn about five percent of all the water the plant produces. So there's a yin and a yang to all of these things. Now we're going to have a revenue source to do that on a, on a probably more thoughtful basis. I think that study to begin to use reclaimed water for various things is about thirty-five thousand dollars, last time I looked at it. But, you know, there's a source of the revenue to, to have that study. The artichoke growers would be able to use water from the plant because it's an indirect food crop. The flower growers would be able to use water from the plant, they're literally next door. But more important, that no one really thought about it back when until someone mentioned it to me, is that's a resource for our industrial park, which is about twelve hundred feet away. So all of these things are great opportunities going forward into the future. And therefore, I move the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, no, we don't, consent, we don't, do we have to do public comment if we take it off? Ah, we'll take a shot at it. Anyone want to talk to us about this? Ah, there's one, okay.
What really started this was the rate increase of fourteen point some odd million dollars a year. And that's where I dug in saying, well, why, where? And that's what really brought this on. It wasn't that things were status quo, there is a big shock coming down the pipe to our community. That's a lot of disposable income. So I felt that my job as a utility commissioner to dig in and dig deep, which is what I did, and I think Larry Bean would see that, and Tim Smith and Gene would see that I did. My job, my due diligence to find out why. And you, probably one of the most important words that was said here tonight by the city administrator was the word overestimation. And that's really what, what I see. And as a, as a private businessman, would I operate the wastewater facility that way and have built it that way and the freshwater facility that way? No, I would not have. Unfortunately, the government operates differently. And is it, I think one of the, the differences of opinion we're having here is the definition of efficient. In Larry's eyes, Tim's eyes, and Gene's eyes, they're efficient, they're being tight. And, and in their eyes, and looking back and talking with them quite a bit, I can see a little bit through their eyes, yes, they are efficient. The downside is that we were asking Gene and Tim to operate facilities that are capable for twice the production of what they are. They're, they can't trim their skeleton any, any thinner. They have to be ready. They have to have these people sitting there. It would be like having Walmart build a store twice the size and have half the shelf empty, but they're waiting. And they have a fully stocked waiting. And that's kind of what the situation is. Is it efficient in my eyes, as a businessman, in the private sector? No. In the government's eyes, how, how they're running and operating it? Yes, this is what they have to do. They are ready. Unfortunately, Lompoc hasn't been ready. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. But this, this is the hardship that the people in this town, unfortunately, are going to have to bite the bullet and try to get through. We got a hundred and five, hundred and six million dollar bond, we got to pay off on that wastewater plant. We have to bite the bullet. We got a hundred and ten miles of lines that need to be reviewed and replaced. So there's a lot on the table for this. I dug deep, I tried to find hard, I wasn't easy, I, I wasn't easy on these guys. You know, I, I read all, every book they put in front of me, hundreds of pages of stuff that they gave me. And there still is one that says bypass the VFDs wherever possible in that one book you gave me. And I did, I mean, I read hundreds of pages of gobbledygook and digested it. I did my due diligence. And there is, that is the complexity of it. There is multiple definitions of efficiency. And, 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 and don't use the oxymoron, when efficiency and government are the same sentence. Unfortunately, it's, it's really, as a businessman looking at it, it's not. And, and not fair to these guys because these guys are doing the best they can. They're watching, watching their eyes and they're dotting their Ts and vice versa. But like, again, they have to sit there with these facilities that are ready. And that's why they, they are where they are. And that benchmark survey, I, I agreed that we didn't need to do another study because there's a lot on the table, there's a lot to learn from in that study. And we don't need to waste millions of dollars trying to study something out and reinvent the wheel. A lot of things are there. And what I mentioned to them is digest it, find out why, analyze why we are where we are, explain to the people, the public, why we are where we are, why it costs so much money, in some cases, to do what we do. And we have a very green facility, we're not dumping chlorine into our wastewater system. We've got a heck of an ultraviolet sterilization, lots of air and oxygen we're putting in there. I talked with, with Tim Smith quite a few times about increasing this and that, and he comes up with ideas, we bounce things back and forth on processing, increasing efficiency on that. You know, and our water system, one of the things that we, that's come up is in freshwater, we pump water way up the hill. We increase the pressure quite a bit. We bring it down, we have pressure regulators. So we just burned a huge amount of efficiency by pumping it all the way up the hill, increasing the pressure so high, and then it come down, we've got to cut it down and throw that energy away through a pressure regulator. So it, it is, a lot of it is built in for what we got. So, you know, I wish I could find a way to, to save the, the people of this town that. And there is one way, which is the growth aspect, which, you know, I'm a big proponent for growth, and we are ready for it on those aspects. And then because we have growth, that's one of the reasons why we are where we are. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else?
Pam Wall, local resident. I, I do have a question. Mr. Bean talked about the restrictions put on water usage. You know, you've talked about our conservation and that we're meeting the targets from the state, but nobody's talked about the consequences if we don't meet those restrictions. And that applies to everybody. How much enforcement are you going to be doing? That's a mandate by the state. You see water running in the street or watering at the wrong times of day. You've put out nothing to the public, and I, and people are questioning that, as Councilmember Costa said, people are asking questions, and there's been no word on, you know, how you're going to implement that or, or the consequences. I mean, you feel very comfortable that we're safe with our water supplies, but that's a, that's a mandate put down by the state for everybody. Are you going to enforce that?
We, we, like any other, most other established communities, have an urban water management plan that lays out as a section of that for drought conditions and what our steps are to respond. So a lot of that has trigger points that we haven't necessarily encountered yet. So that's why some other communities have. Familiar, for instance, in Fresno, the city I was in before this right now, they are, they have restricted, they have taken steps because their, their system called for it. They're down to watering one day a week, and it's in very restricted hours, and they have hired people on to go around, do those patrols. We just haven't hit those trigger points yet because we're not in, as I said, each, each particular location's unique, and we haven't hit those trigger points. But our plan is available, and if it's helpful, I don't know if it's on the website or not, but it's, we certainly can, can put that information pretty easily on the website to make it available.
I couldn't find anything on that. But nothing's getting out to the public either. I mean, they shouldn't have to dig so hard to see they're going to get a five hundred dollar fine.
Yeah, for us, we don't have an imminent implementation need right now, but certainly, we don't want to, you know, we're not trying to keep the criteria secret at all, where we, we can create those links.
You know, I don't understand that with the trigger point. We don't have an implementation need because we have plenty of water.
Yeah, apparently I've said something that needs.
No, it's, correction. So let me.
Oh, go ahead.
Let me explain. Our, our current code meets our stage three. We don't, in the urban water plan, because our average usage of, per person per day is at a hundred gallons. We didn't ha, in our urban plan, we don't have all those steps like other agencies do. Our current ordinance and the restrictions, we sent it out, it's on everybody's utility bill in July and in August, what the restrictions are. They're exactly the same as they've been for twenty years, twenty-four years. They were put in place in nineteen ninety, as I just said. Don't water between ten and four. Don't let water when your sprinklers are running. Don't let it run over on the sidewalk or any other hard surface. Don't wash any hard surface with a hose, sweep it. If you're washing your car, don't just let the water run, you have to have a nozzle. Now, can we enforce that? Yes. We have in place that the first offense is, I think.
Warning.
Fifty dollar, well, we would warn first, of course, a fifty dollar fine, then it goes to two hundred and fifty dollar for the second time, and then for the third time, it's a thousand dollar fine. Because we have all those in place and we have a tiered rate system, where if you use over a certain amount, you pay more money, we completely comply with the regulations that the state put in place two weeks ago. So the rules that we put in place in nineteen ninety that had the citizens of Lompoc reducing their water usage down to an average of a hundred gallons per person per day, that nineteen ninety ordinance still has us complying with the twenty fourteen rules. So that's why I say we're in good shape. That's why we haven't thrown out emergency, emergency warnings.
And because.
We just put a notice on your bill to start complying with the current ordinance.
And, and.
Yes, we plan to. We already have people going out and telling people, shut that water off, it's between ten and four. Yes.
And it's important that ours are rather mild, important to understand, our, our steps are rather, I'd say, in comparison, milder than they are in other communities because the citizens have, in, in essence, modified their behaviors over time voluntarily so that in this drastic time, we're not having to be strong-handedly enforcing and changing criteria as much.
I wasn't, and I don't think my five minutes were up. I did, okay. And the other thing is on the water conservation and the amount of water that we have in our aquifers. And Councilmember Holmdahl said, the trickle-down effect is not working. It's, it's going away. And that is feeding our aquifers? Or was that going into our aquifers?
Well, right now, lately, it's just been serving a fifteen or so customers that are outside of the city but in the canyon there. And so they're, those specific people are the ones that are facing the supply challenge right now.
Okay, and I think you mentioned that we're okay for another year or two, or?
Terms of what's going on.
If nothing more comes in the way of rain.
Yeah, I, I think we, we take it, we're taking it on a month-by-month and season-by-season basis. So I'm not ready to say, oh, we're good for a year or two. I'd say if we continue on even with these severe drought conditions, it's, that's probably about the right timeframe, but I'd hate to speculate. I don't, I won't give anyone false sense of security saying, oh, we're good for two years and then come back, you know, six months from now and say, wow, we got these more severe steps we're going to have to take. We're continuing to monitor it as, and it really just has to do, we have to play it out. There's, there's only so much crystal ball work we can do, and a lot of it has to do with.
But as you're watching forward, you're seeing El Nino getting downgraded and, you know, it's not looking good, and I don't feel, I don't feel safe with you.
I, I am not, I, I am a, when it comes to weather forecasting, I am not an almanac or, or longer-term subscriber. For me, I, I hear the stories about what kind of winter this is or the next winter's supposed to be. I'm, I'm not one of those that subscribes to that. I really look at things in a, in a more shorter time period as to what weather phenomenons are expected to be. I've, I've seen too much variation to the imprecise forecast.
Well, I agree, and until we see something in the weather, I mean, you know, it's smart to conserve because we don't know. So, okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to us on this subject? Gone once, gone twice? Gone, okay. Coming back to council, I'll still move the staff recommendation and be looking for a second. And is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes five zero, thank you. Written communications. City clerk?
Nothing.
Oral communications, your last two minutes to talk to us on any subject. Anybody? Gone once, gone twice, gone, nobody. Okay. Council, request comments, meeting reports. Who's turn first? Okay, Dirk, you're it.
I, I'm not going to do any reports, but I wanted to make a comment about our July fifteenth meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I've wanted to bring this out to council. I still have many questions and concerns about our vote on that consolidation of our Affordable Housing Trust. Affordable Housing Trust with the successor agency funds and obligations. One of mine is, is if we have an X amount of money encumbered with one agency, say our Affordable Housing Trust, the successor agency comes in with their money, why are we mixing these? Why, I don't think we ever got the firm answer of why the state pulled our money, how much money. We have millions, but we're not able to use it for monitoring. How much of our cost to combine the Affordable Housing Trust Fund with the successor agency? Will it take away from the initial goal of first-time homebuyer? What kind of staff cost have we incurred with that also? I want to ask council another question here. Did anybody really understand the financial part of that? Ask yourselves this. Go back and review some of it. Did we hire a consultant that night? No, but we are. I don't know if anybody else caught that. You know, it's recommended, it's later, but what's it based on? You know, is there a predictable cause for that? We've already hired consultants numerous times for this. We've hired Urban Futures, we've got a contract complacency report now, and now we intend to go back and hire a consultant to do something for us. Again, there, we never did get a report on the fee cost. And what about the control of these funds in the future so that they're not diverted to other large rental projects, but they stay applied to the first-time homebuyer? Just led nothing out on that. And, you know, as a council, we made a decision involving millions of dollars, but none of us reviewed the accounts. And I just want to say that I'd like you all to really think about this because it's you on a four-to-one vote that we did this, so just, I wanted to air it.
Councilmember Hoadall?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're next for your report.
Oh. I'm just going to say that I was able to make it to Hancock Training last Thursday. About 200 people showed up, invitations to see what Hancock has going. The next day on Saturday, or I guess it was Friday, it was Saturday and had about 1,000 that showed up and did the tour of Hancock College Ground. They had school buses taking them around and everybody I talked to went there, had a good time. Also then on Thursday of last week, I was able to get a tour of the Champion Center and supposedly, they're supposed to be the 15th of this month is a ribbon cutting, so maybe there's a tour. If you don't know what's going on over that, it's one fantastic facility. Like I've told many people, there's one thing, Lompoc has two projects, one is the Hancock Center and one, the Champion Center, there is nothing like it in the United States. They're the top bracket and they're going to be a major consideration for Lompoc. Also, I was able to make Larry Ralston's retirement party up at the Beatty Park and we had a good time on Sunday. So that's what I have done in the last couple of days.
Ms. Barcosta?
Thank you, Marilyn. I wanted to announce an event that's coming up Friday, September 26th. I don't know if you recall, the Area Agency on Aging presented a report highlighting a survey that was done amongst seniors in Santa Barbara County and what they saw was that food insecurity was the number one concern for our local seniors and it hadn't been for many, many years. So they're ramping up certain efforts. This is one of those, it's an event called Food, Food &amp; Food, pretty easy to remember. And that will be at the Dewey Center. So there's some local efforts going on and so I will announce it at the next meeting to remind everyone, but Friday, September 26th, a lot of free things, everyone over the age of 60 is welcome to a lot of the free things and anyone can come. So just wanted to announce that, Friday, September 26th, Food, Food &amp; Food for Seniors. And then, yeah, Councilmember Starbuck, I'm glad that you brought up what you did because from the staff report, the number that comes to my head is like 33,000, but I did go back and look at it because I understood some of it, but I think you're right, the financial piece was actually a range. It wasn't like a definitive cost and the range was the cost could get into the millions for, I believe, the staff and the oversight of the programs. So, you know, upon my second review, I am a little bit concerned and so I don't know how we can move forward with this, if it's something that, that council would be willing to bring back or if they, you know, maybe can give us the authority to go meet as another ad hoc committee perhaps. But I had, I had some current concerns with that as well, so I just wanted to express that here, thanks.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion. Are you volunteering?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to share that staffing budgets do come to council for approval, so there is a process by which you would be informed of the exact amount of a staff budget that we would have for these programs. So the range was provided, not having the full, exact projections, but that those detailed projections would, requests would come through the budget process.
Back to my other question, Mr. Starbuck.
You and I again.
Okay, so, tied third, you're first and second and you can, fourth and, Bob, you want a fifth? And, yeah, that's the fifth vote, not a, okay.
And if, you know, if you don't mind, what we'll?
There's also the Fifth Amendment.
We should try to have, maybe not a date certain, but to report back pretty quickly, you know, because it took us a while for the compliance policy, this shouldn't take us that long, but we should have a reporting back timeframe. What do you, I mean, whatever's reasonable.
I just think there was questions that we didn't delve into that needed to be looked at here. This is, was far too important to have just moved like that on, I think.
Sure.
Okay, so let's say you guys can be back in a, in a couple of meetings.
I'm sorry, what is the motion to come back with?
Oh, they're just going, you just got a new ad hoc committee. They're going to come and talk to you about all this stuff and get it nailed down.
Okay, thank you.
And then they're going to come back, so you're off the hook on that one. Okay, Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did not attend any meetings at the city expense, but along with Councilmember Hoadall and Mr. Starbuck, yes, we, I also attended the Ellen Hancock New Training Center for the Public Safety and it is a fantastic facility. If you didn't get a chance to go out there on Saturday, or Friday, I guess was the public, or Saturday was the public, yeah, you missed a real opportunity. It's, it is state-of-the-art and probably something you will not find anyplace else on the central coast or probably in the state of California.
Did you get your chance yet? Okay. So on behalf of the Hancock Training Facility, I would say it's even bigger than that. It's the best west of the Mississippi, according to them. We had a protracted discussion at SB CAG the other day, but it's a little late, so we'll, we'll pass on that. Had a great time at the Old Town Market, meeting with a bunch of people. It was my privilege to take our outgoing HR director to lunch and thank her for all the things she had done for the city. And I have been remiss in not announcing for two meetings that KTNK 1410 a.m., our live local Lompoc radio station is on the air and I've done a couple of announcements on there of things going on in the city. So put them on your dial and try them out because we finally have a Lompoc radio station. I also spent 11 wonderful days backpacking in the Sierras and then I had to come back, darn it all. So a great time and was had by all. And yesterday, I went to a truly inspirational event, the Coast Valley Services Graduation, where 84 people graduated from the alcohol and drug abuse programs and got their certificates and it was just absolutely wonderful to see the, the lives regenerated and the families that were there to cheer them on. It was just, you got to go sometime, it'll just make your week. So that covers everything and the Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a joint meeting with the Airport Commission at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, August 19th, unless we have a closed session before.